All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. So this evening, we're having a work session with the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, and we have three members from their board. John Gomes is their chair, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, well, good enough. Again, like she said, John Gomes, I'm here with Chief Tyler Lambert and Director Dave Paul. And what we were going to do is a short presentation of the rest of the council. Do you want me to just start?
Go for it, John.
Okay, what I'm going to do is a brief introduction. It's going to be broken down into three parts. I'm going to give you a historical perspective on where we were, where we're at, and where we plan on going. Chief Lambert's going to talk about ISO, and then Director Paul will talk about funding options. We've given you some handouts. One of those says PPC. And I'll touch on all of those. I don't want to make this a class. That's why we gave you the handout, so you'll have information you can read later. So when I refer to certain things, you'll understand, because I'm going to talk about credits and points and ISO and things such as that. And it'll give you, hopefully, a base of knowledge on what we're talking about. So with that said, I just want to thank you for the opportunity and the invite to come here and speak with you. I want you to know that Teller County Northeast Fire Protection District is one of the largest fire agencies in Teller County, and we serve as a hub for training and coordination in the community and as well as in our service area. I'm going to give you a brief overview and then turn it over to the chief, who will talk about Insurance Safety Office. And that's ISO, and a lot of people hear that term frequently. They go, what is ISO? Between myself and Chief Lambert, hopefully, we'll give you a basic understanding of what that is and how it's driven. To start with, we're a special district. We were formed in 1984, and our roots go back all the way to 1896. The majority of our budget is from property tax and specific ownership tax that comprises 99% of our budget. We don't get a lot of monies besides that. We do not receive tax dollars or funding from any city department. The city of Woodland Park has a downtown development authority, which means new businesses also do not fund our district. Those monies go to the city of Woodland Park and the Downtown Development Authority. One of the larger main service areas that you have in your city, of course, is Charis Bible College. They have approximately 1,000 students and have plans to increase that student base as the years go on. They have dormitories. They say they're going to have substantial growth within the next five years. Things change. We realize that, but right now, that's what's being forecast. Charis is tax exempt due to their religious status. And we also don't get any funding from them or property tax revenue from them. Between Charis and Andrew Womack Ministry Operations, they plan to spend $10 to $12 million on construction annually through 2030. And where I got that information was from Andrew Womack, who did an article in the Gazette Telegraph that was dated November 2021. Some of the growth may include additional dorms, convention centers. I could go on and on, but you've probably seen some of the renderings of what may go out or may be built there. They call it the Charis Village. I wanted to provide you a little background on the size of the community and the partners that we work hand in hand with, because a lot of people, I don't think, understand our geographic area. Our district covers approximately 87 square miles that we provide service to. We respond and provide service not only to Teller County, but we assist in providing mutual aid to El Paso County, Douglas County, Park County, Fremont County, as well as the United States Air Force Academy up on Parish Memorial. If you can imagine, there's no way they could respond to a fire quick enough to protect that asset. We also respond to the north side of Pike's Peak and work closely with Colorado Springs Fire Department and Colorado Springs Utility, CSU. For those of you who don't know, a good majority of the north side of Pike's Peak is in Teller County. When the hill climb is run, if there's an accident, it's in Teller County unless it's at the very top. That part goes to Colorado Springs. It's just a jurisdictional thing. We have two fire stations. One is our main station located here in town on Evergreen Heights. And the second station is an unmanned substation. It acts as housing some of our equipment and vehicles, and it's located approximately four miles to the west on Highway 24 on Edlow Road. When you get to the top of the Bluebird Hill there, you'll see the station on the left. We currently have 15 paid firefighters, one chief, Tyler Lambert, one deputy chief, one administrative assistant, and 13 part-time firefighters who work whenever their schedule allows. All of our part-time firefighters are full-time firefighters at different agencies, whether that's Denver, Fountain, Colorado Springs, throughout. So when they're off, they fill those part-time positions for us. Our calls for service in 2013 was 996. Well, since then, it's done nothing but go up, as you would expect. In 2022, we were at 1,397 calls. And last year, we were at 1,403 calls. And what makes this real interesting is a few years back, and I don't know the exact date, we quit responding to calls that dealt with mental patients because the ambulance service had a special contract to take care of that. So even with those taken out, we're still on the upswing. Well, this has happened for the last nine years. As population grows, as well as new commercial growth, it continues in our service area, that 87 square miles. As the population grows, you know we're located west of Colorado Springs on Highway 24. Everybody knows that. But I don't know if you realize, the population in El Paso County is greater than the population in Denver County. El Paso County exceeded Denver County's population about three, four years ago. Right now, we have 740,567 people in El Paso County. Denver County's only got 713,000. Now, if you visualize, 5% of the people that live in El Paso County or Colorado Springs, and we're not including the ones that live in Douglas County or in the top part of Pablo County, if just 5% want to recreate, where are they going to go? There's only three main arteries leaving the front range, really, 70, 50, and 24. So if 5% of that total go to recreate, whether it's fishing, hunting, skiing, looking at Aspen leaves, gambling, whatever they want to do, that's roughly 37,000 cars a day that come through Woodland Park, because they have to go through our community to get there. So why do we need a ladder truck? Because that's what this basis is about. I want to explain to you the reason we need some of the equipment that we need, but specifically the ladder truck. In ISO, that Insurance Safety Office, they collect and evaluate information from communities in the United States on fire protection, on fire suppression capabilities. They basically evaluate different fire departments and communities and say, what is their capability to suppress fires? The data is analyzed and it's then given a public protection classification. That's the handout that you have there. It says PPC. You'll see that in that handout, they talk about ISO, but what I'm going to try and do is condense some of this. The Public Protection Classification is given to communities in a form of a numerical rating, 1 through 10. One being real good, 10 being that you don't even meet the insurance safety mandated standards. A ladder truck, every piece of equipment and everything that's done in a fire department is given a certain credit by the insurance office. So if we have a ladder truck, which we do now, we're given four points. Our total score is 72. something or other, 72.49, which equates to an ISO rating of three. Three is very good. Colorado Springs is trying to get a one because they're at a two. Well, if we lose a ladder truck, we lose the four points for that ISO rating. Our ISO rating in this community would drop from a three to a four. Well, what that really equates to, a lot of people will say, what does that mean? ISO set the insurance companies, if they insure you, go through a particular standard, and they'll say, okay, what's the rating in that community, and we're going to charge this rate based on that. If we lose a ladder truck, we will drop to a four from a three, unless we pick it up somehow. And you can pick it up by increasing training, doing other things, have increased manning, because the more firefighters you have on a truck and the faster you can respond by dumping water on a fire, the higher your rating will go. So what does that equate to? That's going to equate to about a 10% increase that homeowners pay in their insurance rate if we drop from three to a four. And that's if we stay status quo and we do nothing else by adding more training, more personnel, things like that. And of course, we're trying to do that, and I'll explain that to you later. Northeast Teller realized the need for a ladder truck in 2004 when the city put plans to build at that time, Woodland Station. It was going to meet ISO criteria for a ladder truck. Since then, many other structures have met the ISO criteria or been given variances by the city to exceed the height requirement, such as the Old Sterman Properties, Charis Properties, Park State Bank, Trail Ridge Apartments, the library, that's to name a few. So ISO requires that we have a ladder truck if we want to keep the ISO rating. There's nothing saying we have to have a ladder truck. What we're trying to do is serve our customers, your constituents, the best we can by giving them a lower ISO rating and, of course, saving them some money. You know, one of the other reasons that we would like a new ladder truck is not all ISO, because what do firefighters do? The main reason is life safety. We want to be able to save lives if that need ever arises, God forbid. But we know that one day there's going to be a fire. One day, maybe not in my lifetime, maybe not in your lifetime, and we want to, our goal is saving people's lives, especially the lives in this community and the district that we serve. So to me, that is a lot more important than an ISO rating. Since 2004, the fire district has had two different ladder trucks. Both of them were used. Both of them came from other departments, and both of them, we ran to the end of their service life. And I'll explain a little bit about service life and what that is. We currently have one ladder truck, and it was purchased from the city of Denver in 2012. It's a 1993 ladder truck, and it's approaching the end of its service life as it's 31 years old. Our mechanic tells us that after 30 years, it's very hard, if not impossible, to retain or obtain replacement parts for such a specialized piece of equipment. It's not like going to Napa Auto and saying, I want a new starter for my 65 Mustang. There's a lot of 65 Mustangs out there, and they carry those parts. The companies that make ladder trucks realize that once it reaches a certain age, they're not going to carry parts for it. Why? Because nobody has one anymore. It's not feasible for them or economical for them to carry parts for a 35- or 40-year-old ladder truck. So that puts the onus on us. We have a mechanic that we took off of firefighting duties about years ago now. And we sent him to school to learn how to repair fire trucks. But he's, you know, he's doing a wonderful job. Don't get me wrong, but he can't repair something if he doesn't have a part. If you can't get a part manufactured for a 30-year-old ladder truck, and ladder trucks have to get inspections annually. The state comes out, they say, does the ladder go up? Does the water flow at a certain rate? All of this. If that isn't met, we, again, have to put the ladder truck out. We're governed by what's called NFPA. NFPA is the National Fire Protection Association. They come out with standards. It's almost like your police department has certain standards during accreditation. The National Fire Association says, look, there are certain standards, and if you want that shield of liability, you better start meeting these standards. So we learned that a long time ago, that we want to provide the best service possible, and we're going to do it by those standards. Well, they have a standard called 1911. In Appendix D, it states, because of changes, upgrades, and fine standards, tuning, the NFP 1901 has been truly significant, especially in the area of safety. Fire departments should seriously consider the value or risk the firefighters of keeping fire apparatus more than 15 years old in a first-line response. We don't have a choice. That truck we have that's 31 will be a first-line response if we have a fire that's above the height standards that we have, which is 35 feet, and then there's certain gallons per minute that have to be dumped. We'll get into that a little more, too. But anyway, says apparatus that were not manufactured, applicable to those NFPA standards that are over 25 years old, should be replaced. That's just what they have. We will try to do the best we have of keeping that in service as long as we can. But we're also at the mercy of those places. What's the name of that company who makes the parts for a lot of the trucks, the big?
Or ladder truck is a Pierce.
A Pierce, the Pierce Company. If they don't have the parts, they're not going to make them anymore, period. Simple as that. So what other funding have we sought for a ladder truck? Because that's the next thing we get asked a lot. Where else did you go for funding? What have you done? And this is going to incorporate something else in that ISO that I'll tell you, that we're trying to raise that number from that 72.49. We're trying to raise that. So if we lose a ladder truck, we won't financially affect the people in this community through insurance rates. Let me explain that to you. So what we've done is, last year, we applied for Congressional Direct Spending Grant through Senator Hickenlooper's office. In that grant, we included a ladder truck. We said, we really need the new ladder truck. That's $1.5 million for a new ladder truck. That's what it costs, at today's cost. Next year's cost, you know as well as I do, unless inflation just goes the opposite direction, that 1.5 is going to be, your guess is as good as mine, but it's not going to be 1.5 anymore. So we put in for that Congressional Direct Spending Grant. We made it all the way to appropriations. Appropriations, one of Senator Hickenlooper's aides called and said, we really want to fund you, but we don't see the need on how a ladder truck is a regional resource. We put in for a ladder truck and a regional training tower. They said, you would have been better off just putting in for the training tower, because we can show how that's applicable to the hundreds of paid and volunteer firefighters we have in this area, because it would serve us, a regional training tower would serve us, Douglas County, Fremont County, Park County, all these other places, as well as all the volunteer fire departments that we have in Teller County, whether that's Four Mile, Mountain Communities, well, Mountain Communities is actually in Douglas, but Lake George, all of those areas that need training. So we put in for that, and we didn't get it. So this year, what did we do? We applied again. This time, we left off the ladder truck, because we thought about this and said, okay, that PPC that I gave you, on the back page of that, shows, if you flip your whole thing over on the back page, there's going to be numbers there. And on the bottom number should say 72.49. Well, there's a category under there called Training. We've increased training at the Northeast Teller County Fire Department immensely. We've been focusing on more and more training. Why? Because we can get more credits. If we get more credits for training, if that regional training tower is also approved, we're going to end up getting more credits, which might offset, depending upon what happens in the future. Now, where are we at currently with that training tower? It's looking positive. We were notified by the congressman's office that we're again at appropriations, and it's looking good. Now you know what I do. I'm not going to count anything as a positive until they send me a check or a letter saying, here you go. But it's looking a lot better than it did last year. I'll tell you that. Yes, Congressional Direct Spending Grant.
Both Hickenlooper's and Senator Bennett's.
Yeah, both this year. Because what we've done is not only that, we are also continuously searching actively for grants. Next question that comes out, well, did you ever reach out to Charis, since they're one of the areas that you provide services to? We absolutely did. We reached out to them, and initially, we reached out and we said, what we'd like is just anything that you can give us. We didn't specify a ladder truck and say, will you give us money for a ladder truck? It took them six months. They came back and said, no. No explanation, just no. Over the years, there's also a couple copies of letters that we sent, and we asked them for PILT monies, which is payment in lieu of tax. And again, we were told no. And we've been asking for that for how long? Since 2011. So we just get told no. I want you to understand also, if we get that training power through that Congressional Direct Spending, which currently looks favorable, please realize that's a matching grant. That's not fully funded. So we have to come up, we, our district, has to come up with an additional roughly $400,000, $450,000. Part of that's in kind, and the rest is in cash. And just to ease your concerns, we put that away. We have that money. So if that grant is approved, we can take care of that portion of that.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
You started out talking about all the different areas that we serve, Douglas County, Salt County. So was that taken into consideration the first time you applied to this grant for a ladder truck?
Yes, we put, right. And matter of fact, we emphasize that, because currently, we hold 12 different MOUs with other agencies, mutual aid agreements, and we pointed that out to them, that this would also serve Park County, Fremont County, Douglas County, and it would be a regional use. And they said, no, we don't see it that way. What can you say? We said, thank you very much for considering us. We'll apply again next year. So with that training tower alone, it's going to be a regional emergency service facility training tower to establish and serve our community. Because the more, right now, what we do when we need training for higher structures, we have to go to Fort Carson. We occasionally, did we hit Air Force Academy? Problem is, we're taking our resources out of the county. If something happens while they're down there, it would, yes, they need the training, but it's going to take an hour to get back up here. That means we would have to kick in our MOUs and say, who else has a ladder truck anywhere in the area? Well, the closest one would be Purple Creek. And then Colorado Springs, of course, would bring us. Do what?
96.
So they're facing things such as that also. Currently, we reached out with that letter of support, because it's not just firefighters are going to be using that training tower. Our local police sheriff's office and the Colorado State Patrol are going to benefit from that regional training facility, and they all signed letters of support when we submitted that grant. Oh, right there where the fire department is. No, this is a standalone. And the reason we decided to go with that standalone right now is the Congressional Direct Spending Office told us, you know, don't include your ladder truck, because we don't see that as a huge regional resource. Your training tower is more of a regional resource that we would provide funding for.
The point is, the variances to the 35-foot restriction around the county, in the park, down into Fremont, up in the Douglas, they don't tie a ladder gun. They don't have those structures. It's just Purple Creek in the city.
Well, these other agencies that are saying that they support, or they supported the grant, trying to get the grant, are they kicking in financially as well, or no?
No, no, they are not.
Could they?
Because, could they? Yes, but you have to remember, a lot of them are volunteer agencies. And we take the outlook of it's better to train volunteers if they don't have the money to pay than to not train them at all. And we're going to continue with that philosophy. So. Got where it was. But anyway, right down here. The planned growth and the increases in calls, as well as the expected population growth in our service area, including mutual aid coverage area to effectively fight fires, we want to have the best possible response to that. And.
Does the the Teller County Sheriff's Office over there?
So have you gone to the county to get any funding?
Divide's not our district, so Divide would have to do that for their needs of a ladder truck.
Oh, okay. All right.
And it's two and a half stories, so it's not.
So it's not, it doesn't hit the 35-foot, okay.
Hey, let me read you exactly what some of that is. A ladder truck counts as four points, and ISO sets the standard. And says, if a city has five buildings that are three or more stories, or 35 feet or more in height, or five buildings that have a needed fire flow greater than 3,500 gallons per minute, or any combination thereof, that's when you need a ladder truck. That's why the city needs one. So you could have one structure over 35 feet, but if you don't meet the other requirement, buy buildings or areas like that, you wouldn't need one. Well, all of the five buildings, all of the buildings that I mentioned to you, Trail Ridge Apartments, so on and so forth, are in city. That's why we need a ladder truck here. Having said all of that, we feel that by requesting for assistance and funding in consideration to obtain a new ladder truck is going to benefit not only our department and potentially save lives, but it will benefit this entire community. With that, I'll let the chief speak a little bit about ISO, so you get a little better understanding of what that is, and that'll be followed up with my director Paul.
So you've got in front of you a packet. It's called the PPC, which is the Public Protection Classification. This is what ISO gives us as a final report when they come and evaluate the fire departments. And if you will, just flip it over on the back. And in there, you'll see that the first section is Emergency Communications. That comes from the dispatch centers. They're awarded up to 10 points towards the 100 that it takes to have ISO evaluated. So City of Woodland Park Dispatch Center and Teller County Sheriff's Department, they both dispatch us. So our calls from service in City of Woodland Park come from City of Woodland Park. Calls in the county go from Teller County. Overall, they did real well, 7.61 out of 10 points. So they've done a very good job. The next section is the fire department, and this is what they look at all of our stuff and they evaluate us on there. And you can see through the things that they've done. The fire department is rated at 31.14 out of 50 points. And the last section is the City of Woodland Park's water supply, along with some of our special districts of water operators around our fire district, such as Wood and West, Paint and Pony and such. And so they're rated on their section, which is worth 40 points. And so all those together, they rated 34.31 points out of 40. So you can see, we're a little bit far behind with the fire department. And going down through that, and we'll check on, we'll And going down through that and, and we'll check on, we'll look at a couple of these, um, I'll point out two things, one is obviously the, uh. Um, the five forty nine, which is the credit for the ladder service truck, um, we rate four out of four points. And so by losing that truck, uh, we didn't lose that four points. If you look down at the bottom is seventy two point four nine, that's how they rate you when they add up and do the, um, diversion. Um, with all this stuff, but I'll take you up to page three, if you turn to page three. You'll see in the middle of the page there, um, they show the PPC point scoring. And so you'll see that, uh, the fire department is rated a class three. Um, and that puts us in the seventy to seventy nine per, um, point range, right now we're at seventy two point four nine, so we're only two point four nine points away from losing. A class three going to a class four, what we're trying to do is, is. Keep that as a class three and not go back to class four, which we just did, um, in two thousand twenty three, that's when this report came out. Um, and they rate us every five years.
Oh.
Um, and so back in the day, it used to be ten years or whenever they got around to it, now it's five years.
Chief, uh, can I ask, go ahead, yeah, um, divergence, what is that?
They, they use their formula system that they use, um, when they add up all these scores.
Yeah.
Um, to put into the classification, that's where you get that on the, the very back, um, page. So they rate us at the, the seventy two point four nine out of the one oh five point five available points. So we actually get five extra points or, um, or up to five and a half extra points by the very last, um. Um, point of the, uh, community risk reduction, so what do we do for the community? They're giving us four point, uh, one three out of five point five, um, in the community risk reduction category.
Right.
So those are actually extra points for us because of what we do, so like our open houses that we do, uh, going out to the community, doing some of our, uh, inspection stuff. All of that extra stuff that we do, we have four point one out of five point five.
But the divergence itself, I'm, I'm confused, why, why are we losing four point seven points? Why, why, what is that?
What do you mean we're losing?
On this back page, divergence and says.
Um, that's their. That's their formula system that they use, I'm not sure what that exactly is.
Aggregative accounting adjustment.
It could be, yeah, I never asked that question, I could ask it for sure.
So my, my other question, back in May, the DDA, uh, awarded some money. I'd like to address that because I just told him I wanted to speak again, but, uh, what, what, what happened is, uh. That the DDA. Also agreed with us and said, hey, what we want to do is we want to give you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, uh. They were gracious enough to. Look at that and say, we realize you need a new ladder truck, we'll, we'll start this. Funding. Well, we told them to queue kick in a hundred and fifty, we'll pull a hundred and fifty out, but we just ordered another half million dollar. Uh, rescue truck that we're still waiting on, uh, except.
It's a fire truck, rescue truck, yeah.
Fire rescue truck. And I, I want you to understand, we matched that too, so we have three hundred dollars towards that. Three hundred. That three hundred thousand dollars is towards that one point five, and that's if we get that money this year or. Next year it might be one point six hundred and seven, I don't know, so now that the DDA was extremely gracious in doing that. Uh. And. There you go, there's your answer on that, talk about some of that. Over here too.
Um, I'll take you to page six, and what that is, is the distribution of the PPC score grades, you'll see across the United States, countrywide. Um, that, uh, they put this report out in two thousand twenty, they published this, um, this rating score and you can see that in a class three, there's thirty five hundred eighty three. Um, fire departments in across the United States that's in that category and you can see how it jumps up into class four, class five and so on. For different fire departments, so we're. We're doing very well, we don't want to go backwards and go to the, uh, um, to the class four side of it.
Uh, one chief. We were a class four, now we're a class three?
We are a class three currently.
Okay, okay. Well, chief, I had another question for you, or maybe any of you guys. Are you monitoring, um, or maybe anecdotally, the insurance increases that we're experiencing in town here even? Um, even cancellations of insurance?
We have a number of calls every day, um, that deal with the insurance companies and they want us to go out and, um, override some of their, um, inspectors. If you will, and so we're trying to put a program together where we can give them some documentation on what we see on, on, on the ground.
Right.
To help some of those homeowners, um, keep their insurance or at least get new insurance. But right now we're telling folks that, um, there's been people with thirty year, um, mortgages or, uh, insurance companies and. They're having to switch because they don't want to insure them anymore.
Right.
So it's, it's across, not just here, it's, it's all of Tyler County, we hear from all the fire districts.
Um, my last question I think might be to Aaron, so recently we received the fire mitigation grant.
Mm-hmm.
Does. Like, I, I, it's from, I, I think it was state, but. I don't remember what the purpose or what we're going to do with it.
Uh, the cost of grant we received is one million dollars and we're going to mitigate the adventure property, our reservoir site, and then there's five other locations that have. Minimal mitigation, but I don't know how much that would affect this piece.
It, it wouldn't, I was just wondering if there's any applicability or any, any way we can.
It's obviously a partnership, but yeah, it's not, um, it's specific for those sites.
Okay.
Um, I'll take you to page, uh, seven and you'll see that that's where our score is and so going down the fire department side of it, you'll see then, um. You'll see the item of five forty nine is credit for ladder service, like I just said, it's four out of four. The other one I'll, uh, point to is going to be the, uh, person, company personnel, so five seventy one. And right now with our personnel staffing, um, we're at four point six nine out of fifteen credible points. And so we're really lacking in, in company personnel, um, we need, we need more personnel. The next one is the five eighty one credit for training, you'll see we're at six point seven nine, uh, a possible of nine, uh, total points. Um, to be able to get there with the training tower, that's going to obviously move up our, our training side of it for structural fires, which will, that'll increase just a little bit, um, we're hoping. On page twelve, we can go into. Um, the fire department side of it, you'll see on there. Um, that's where the, uh, they start breaking down, so this is where it gets into the fire department specifically, those other sections before it will be, um, for the other one, so right now we'll, uh. We'll look at that, uh, um, page fourteen, which is number five forty nine. And that just gives you a little insight on, uh, the ladder truck, so you'll see that, um. Within the city, the reason why we have to have a ladder truck is because there's, uh, if you have. Any five buildings. That are three or more stories or thirty five feet in height. Or five buildings that have a needed fire flow of greater than thirty five hundred GPM requires a ladder truck. Um, and we've got, um, probably about fourteen of them in the City of Woodland Park that is in this category.
Fourteen.
Fourteen buildings.
Fourteen, yeah.
Wow.
So it's either the greater in height, the large of them without sprinkler systems in them, they require the thirty five hundred GPM, so all those clumped into one, um, we had about fourteen of those.
So how many buildings are down at, um? The apartment complex, Trail Ridge?
I. Is there six or seven?
Okay, so it's the, those buildings plus the bank plus the buildings at Charis.
Plus the movie theater, plus the library, plus the Walmart, plus, um.
The movie theater, really?
Yeah, because it's three stories on one side.
Yeah, well, it looks like a fire hazard too.
Yeah. Anything over thirty five hundred GPM, the, uh.
Professional building, isn't that over?
Right on the corner of West and twenty four, it's over thirty five hundred GPM, it's non-sprinkler.
Hey, uh, my research assistant just found, figured out what that divergence score is, it's actually, it's a, it's a, um. Penalty, if you will, or, so they're taking off points because your fire department credit. Score is less than the water supply score. So if you're, yeah, so if your fire department score goes up, then we don't lose those points if you can match the water supply.
So we need to do better.
Yeah.
We need to fund four more positions.
That, we need to do better with funding, yeah, you know.
And if you've had the funding for them, can you hire them?
We just hired three of us last year.
Did you?
Yes.
So, so it's not an, an issue of personnel to hire?
No, we still need to go to the plan in twenty eighteen, lay all of this out.
Yep.
And, uh, matter of fact, it also mentioned the regional training.
Built. And, and yeah, and that's, that would help too, right, so that tower is going to be pretty critical.
It is.
Yeah.
That's why we kept going forward with it.
Yes.
But our training is already close to the top.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're almost at nine points.
Yeah, so it won't necessarily offset. So.
Except if we lose the ladder truck, we lose four, if we gain the personnel, we'll gain some, we just don't know exactly how much it would be.
Yeah.
Big, your biggest place where you can grow or grow your credit score. Is really the, the personnel line. So what's the? Five out of fifteen. So what's a new firefighter cost?
A hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand a year.
How many, chief, how many positions are you guys currently short? If you imagine full staffing, what's the delta between how many you have and how many you would need?
Realistically, we need six more firefighters, two per shift.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have the facilities to do that, we're having to remodel our station right now to house the three new ones that we have.
Okay.
And so we have to start looking at building another building, um, to build a house more than that, I think.
So it's kind of two part problem, getting the people, getting the funding for the people and then making sure the fire station can hold them when you get them.
Yep. Uh, next one, I'll, I'll shoot, um, is, um, page sixteen, you'll see the item five seventy one, that's on credit for company personnel, what we were just talking about. You'll look down toward the bottom of it, um, so the scoring rating right now, um, recognizes that we have about five point three five. How they come up with three five on duty, uh, personnel, an average of four, a personnel per, um, responding to a first alarm structure fires. So that's where the personnel side is going to come in, uh, we have hired on, uh, deputy chief, so as long as two chiefs are there, then one of those chiefs can be counted as a firefighter. Um, so that's going to help in that, uh, realm too, but you can see we only get to four point six nine points out of the fifteen that's available. And the last section I'll, um, go to is. Is the, uh, credit for company, uh, training, which is on page seventeen, item, uh, five eighty one, you'll see where facilities in use. This is where the training tower could come into, so right now we're getting seventeen point five points, um, for ability to, uh, train. In that area with the train tower, uh, there's available up to thirty five points, so that's going to help get that, um, just up a little bit more.
Do you guys have an idea what the training tower is going to award you, return to the points?
No.
No, no.
Okay.
Oh, eighteen hours, so they do it based on number of hours?
Yeah. Um, and that's all I have for going through this, there's a lot of information here, you guys are welcome to, you know, or call if you have questions on it, I'd be happy to answer that. Um, if you have any questions on the, uh. ISO.
With that one, it's the Director Paul.
Thank you. So you got a little package of information from me, but I'm not going to get it through it because it's all your information. And you can go through it at your leisure, um, what I really want to kind of discuss is. And I first and foremost realize that I don't think any of you appear. When the decisions were made to start offering these variances to the thirty five foot height restriction. Maybe you wasn't. Yeah.
I'm always on staff.
Yes, so.
Planning.
The, ultimately where we, the circumstance that we find ourselves in. Okay, the reality. Is that the City of Woodland Park. Has made. Decisions. Over the last twenty years. And twenty years ago, I was the one that made the city aware that the thirty five foot height restriction. Had ramifications. For the fire service. When the first machination of Woodland Station came out, it was five stories tall, it had a hotel and a conference center and a beautiful watercolor rendering. And Joe and I had a discussion at that time that you need to write us a check for a million dollars. Because if you're going to build that building. We have to have a ladder truck. To do any substantive firefighting in that facility. Life and safety was the primary goal. All of the ramifications for insurance. Aside. He was made aware at that time and when that dissolved, for reasons that we won't go into. It sort of got dropped and over the, over the next twenty years. There have been variances granted. Repeatedly over our objections in many cases. And now we find ourselves in a circumstance where. We don't have the ability to replace the pieces of equipment that we have cobbled together over the last twenty years. To meet the requirement. Of the safety of the people that live in these buildings and work in these buildings, um. The working in the buildings is. Probably much less of a danger than the apartments. To have people living where we won't be able to do a rescue because we don't have the proper equipment. Is a big issue. And. As a recovering politician. I have been in a position where I had to take responsibility during the period of time I was in elected office. For many decisions that I didn't necessarily agree with. And I want just to give you. The reminder. And the perspective. That this issue is an issue that has been created by who you now represent. And it protects who you now represent. Your constituency is at risk. And mitigating that risk takes money. And the budget items in here are, are highlighted. I did highlight that in two thousand and ten, the sales tax revenue, which is the only revenue that we get. From nonprofits. And in our case, from the DDA because we got that hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant about ten minutes after we had a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars in tax revenue removed from us. And diverted to the Downtown Development Authority, so we were thankful for the one fifty, but it didn't even break us even for one year. And if you go back and look at the sales tax revenue, you were at two point four million dollars in two thousand and ten. Now you're at five point nine. And there's been a lot of discussion about economic development and raising the tax base and collecting more sales tax. And I congratulate the city on the fact that they have been extremely. Good at that, you've more than doubled your sales tax revenue in twenty years. Not even twenty fifteen. But that extra three and a half million dollars a year in, in, in sales tax. Comes with impacts. And you really need to look at the responsibility of the city. To mitigate the direct impact. That allowing thirty five foot height restrictions to be. Basically wiped away by variances. And what that has done to our department. We really need a new ladder truck that the city should probably provide, even if it's through an impact fee. To the developers that are providing this, this issue for us, and I don't know why impact fees have not been. Much more aggressively pursued in the expansion. However. The responsibility lies with you, you are the city council. You make the decisions. And if you're going to be responsible. It would be a wonderful thing if you could work into your budget. Money to pay for a, a number of firefighters. So that we can mitigate the impact of the huge increase in population that we are responsible to protect. In. Twenty ten, there was eighty five hundred people in the City of Woodland Park. On any given weekend, if there is a program, there could be an additional thirty five to four thousand. Just outside of.
Yeah, go check out the park right now.
Yeah, so, and these are all things that are, are wonderful things for the city and they collect sales tax off the activity. But we live on property tax, until last year, we couldn't even ask for a sales tax. And considering the level of sales tax that we're already. Taking especially on groceries, I don't think that anybody would vote for a sales tax for anyone, even the fire department. The bottom line is, we're also looking at a special session, I'm sure you were made aware of that. The legislature is going to do a special session to reduce property tax. Because it doesn't affect the state. It only affects local government. And I guarantee you, we're probably looking down the barrel of a reduction in our budget, short term. I'm talking about the next two to three years. At a critical time. When we're already one point five and probably by the time we would have a ladder truck delivered, one point eight million dollars in the hole. Bear in mind, you don't just call up ladder trucks R Us and give them the credit card for the one point five million. We take four to six months to design the truck, then it goes into production, which takes two to three years and when it's complete, then we get the bill. And it has to be paid. So I'm. Don't want to hit it too hard and I appreciate the fact that.
Good to know.
You, you know, as elected officials. It falls on you, I'm not blaming you for it, but it is your responsibility now.
Are, are you able to, uh, help me understand the, the money that you lost ten minutes before the DDA gave you a hundred and fifty grand, what did that?
Well, the DDA, all of the, all of the incremental. Taxes, property taxes that would go to us. From the businesses inside the footprint of the DDA.
Yeah.
Are returned to the Downtown Development Authority, uh, and not given to us. So the businesses that pay their taxes in the DDA.
Yeah.
That would, that would otherwise go to the fire department to mitigate the impacts of their facilities. Are actually rerouted through the Tax Increment Finance Program to the DDA. To the DDA. So we don't get those tax revenues, but we still have to have our constituents subsidize.
Correct. Figure out if we were to uh dissolve the DDA in the near term. Um, some of those tip agreements would go on for some period of time. We we would have to honor those. But if there were no more tip agreements starting today. Have you looked at how much that might bring back to the different taxing districts?
Well, if it reduced the TIF completely.
Yes.
We would get a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars a year. Based on the.
The current, current tip agreements.
For twenty twenty three's revenue.
You know, that was always something I looked for whenever a a new development was going to go under consideration by the DDA. What was, what was the response of Netco? And for a long time, it was, okay, it's it's kind of tax neutral. Uh, I would really like to see more scrutiny if if we continue to um. Uh, sponsor the DDA. Every new development needs to be scrutinized. And what does it cost your taxing district? We need to know that.
I don't think we've been terribly neutral on that.
Uh, back in the day.
We 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 have talked.
Well, I I I here recently, I have seen uh, you know, a couple of projects where there was absolutely uh a Netco uh. Negative response on on whether or not the project should go forward. And I won't mention which ones those were, but I would certainly like to see that and it would help. Help the DDA make a decision and the council make a decision, but um but to me it goes back to. It 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 may be time for the DDA to close down. It's costing all of the taxing districts.
Correct. It is not just the fire department. There are others. The ambulance is another example.
And the library.
And the library.
And school district.
School district, everyone, the county, the city. Yeah, I realize we're.
One thing I want to reaffirm. Because I saw a shift in the conversation, is I want you to understand, right now we have a ladder.
Right.
Right now, that ladder truck is operable. The question is going to be, how long can we keep it on?
Right.
Before we get enough funding. And it could be as soon as tomorrow. Our goal is to get a new one before the old one breaks. But at thirty one years old. I don't know how long Pierce is going to continue making parts.
But.
But I can tell you, we're going to do everything in our capability to keep that truck operable.
I I I certainly hope so. And I also think we need to close with the fact that you do have access to ladder trucks, but. You know, distance is the the tyranny in this case.
Because if we happen to get an additional ladder truck from Colorado Springs or from Crete Creek.
It's time.
Take a while, depending upon what day it is, how heavy the traffic is. Where they're at. Do they have a fire going?
Dave, what was the timeline again from the minute you decide, okay, we're going to order this truck and design and how many?
It's between three and three and a half years. To take delivery. How long have we been waiting on the rescue truck we ordered to be?
We're at fifteen months ready.
Fifteen months. And it's due in twenty twenty seven.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah, this has been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions offline if you want to call us too. And again, just remember, if you have additional questions or comments, feel free to call Chief Tyler. And uh, they'd be happy to answer them, or you can give them my. You can call, he call me. Or give them my number and I'll be happy to speak to you anytime you'd like.
I have.
Thank you. We're stopped by the fire station.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.